Good evening, I'd like to call to order the City Council meeting of the San Rafael City Council on Tuesday, February 18th, 2020, and I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance under the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So, the City Council did meet in closed session, I'll ask the City Attorney, is there any reportable action?
Thank you, I have two things to report. The City Council met in closed session on Wednesday, February 12th, and also met in closed session this evening, and there was no reportable action in either of those closed sessions.
Thank you. Now, I'll turn to the public, is there anyone who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay. Mr. Carney, you'll have two minutes, please identify yourself.
Good evening, I'm Bill Carney with Sustainable San Rafael, I wanted to let everybody know about a really great opportunity to actually do something hands-on about climate change, which is plant some trees. Thanks to the good work of our Sustainability Coordinator in the city, we have gotten 100 trees donated to the city, and we're looking for people from all over the city to help plant those up on McKenna's Parkway and also in the canal. There will be a workshop leading up to this on Saturday, a week from Saturday, the 29th of February, and then we'll find out how to do it, how to do it correctly with technical prowess and love, so these trees really get off to a good start. And the actual tree planting will be on March 28th. So, it's 100 trees here, we're going to be paralleled a bit later up in Nevada with another 100 trees, so we're getting a start here on rebuilding the canopy of the urban forest. So, I look forward to a lot of people coming out to that. Thank, oh, and you can adopt a tree to make sure they get watered well, we're taking donations at Sustainable San Rafael specifically for that purpose, urge everybody to do that, it costs a lot of money, and this will relieve some burden from the city if we can get donations for that cause. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. And Bill, can people go to the Sustainable San Rafael website if they need all the information that you just gave?
They can go there, or to the city's sustainability website also, and I think Cory has something posted there as well.
Okay. So, for anyone who's interested, if you go to the cityofsanrafil.org and just in the search bar, put in "tree planting," and I'm sure it will come up. Okay, so now, I'm going to ask my colleagues to join me below the dais for a special presentation. And I'm also going to ask Brian Auger, our San Rafael Event Coordinator, to come on up. We love special presentations because it gives us the opportunity to recognize amazing and wonderful things going on in our community, and tonight is one of those evenings. We have two separate presentations where we will be giving out some awards or acknowledging some rewards that are being given out. I'm going to hand the microphone, will you come up here?
What am I talking about?
You're shy. And I'm going to hand it over to Brian, but in the meantime, I would love it if Adam Vialante comes up, because we're going to be talking about you.
All right, folks, most of you know what we're here for, I just want to say that I've had the joy of working with a lot of great individuals that are very passionate about our city and our community, and like to show it off, and have created events in our downtown and in their neighborhoods, and have made a lot of sacrifices with time to make things happen. About 12 years ago, this young gentleman here, who is in the West End Business Owner of the Pine Size Lounge, had been wanting to do something for a while, and we chatted and worked together, but he had this great idea for the West, it was originally called the West End Family Fun Day, and now it's become the West End Celebration, and it's a really great event, and it's organic, it's all local, it had some great music, and, well, let Adam kind of give a little history or background, but we'll present his award in a second, which is actually the second time he's won this award, it's from this group I belong to called CalFest, and he got promotional poster award for the promotional poster not for sale, so cell phones free zone, but anyway. So, his artwork is amazing, it's out there on the table if you want to look at it, but this is Adam Vialante.
Hello.
I can hand it to you, too, I'm not sure how to do that. Do you want to say a few words?
Yeah, I don't really have much to say other than, thank you, thank you, Brian, thank you, San Rafael, that's pretty much it. Well, actually, really quick, we're going to do the festival again, it's been kind of a inconsistent festival, so out of 12 years, we've done it eight times. We've been really consistent in the last three years, and the city has been nothing but supportive, I've got a committee now through the BID that assists in the operation, so it's alive and healthy, and there's money in the bank to do it again, so, there you go.
And thank you, I was there last year, and it was amazing, the wrestling, I've never seen anything like that, it was phenomenal, so, yeah, so if you haven't had a chance to attend, I strongly recommend that you check it out, it was an amazing experience. No, let's, I think photo now, otherwise we have to come down, so everyone bear with us, we're going to get a photo of this occasion. Okay. Okay, we have one more, we're going to keep it going, and this is for the San Rafael Porch Fest, Brian's going to give a little background, and in the meantime, you are going to tell me who is going to come up to receive the award, and this, the San Rafael, the Porch Fest Organizing Committee and the founding member, Tom Obletz, is going to come up, come on up.
All right, well, while they're coming up here, I'll say, the one thing different about this was, I have never worked with such a powerful organization, an organized organization before. As you know, Gersel Park is one of our most, it's not the only beautiful, but it's one of our beautiful neighborhoods that we're very proud of, that is vintage, and it's just unique, and we're very lucky to have that, and they have this amazing Gersel Park Neighborhood Association, and these wild and crazy, passionate folks that really, you know, they take the city to task from what I know sometimes, but they've been great collaborative partners in making things happen and working on stuff, so I'm going to hand it over to Gina Silvestri, who's the President of the Committee, and let her explain a couple of things, but this has been amazing for two years, and our third year will be September 20th in Gersel Park. They're good at promotion, did I say that?
Thank you, Brian, I want to thank you, it's, has been, there's a big group up here, but this is probably a fraction of the amount of volunteers it takes to pull off this event. We couldn't do it first and foremost without, well, A, the vision of Tom Obletz, and then B, the collaboration with the city, it made it all that much easier, and we have, representing here, we have porch hosts, we have, I don't see any bands here, but we, well, sorry, Jenny and Phil, I'm nervous, Jenny Curran, Phil Milner, who are personally responsible for organizing all of the over 50 bands who volunteered their time to play for Porch Fest, so it's a labor, huge labor of love for all of us, so this is a fun tribute, thank you.
And it's not just a tribute, they do amazing work, and it's being recognized, that's the thing that's really fun about this. So, they received first place for a commemorative poster, I don't know if we have a sample, is it out in the lobby? Kind of like that, so this is plaque award number one.
One of how many?
I will just go through them, they are all well-deserved. First place for event photo. Oh, and here's a photo, it is amazing here, you'll get a plaque. First place for program or schedule of events, and to Gina's point, there's a lot of effort that goes into this, I mean, these are just being recognized for a few of the pieces, but there were a lot of pieces. And finally, oh, we'll have to do a close-up on this, wearable souvenir guitar pick earrings, that is not something you see every day, oh, and they're being, they're being, okay, yep, they're being sported. And they were, this one's for you, then. Tom, would you like to say a few words before we do some photos? Come on up.
Thanks so much. Thanks. The opportunity to work with these folks has been fabulous, I think I proved the concept the first year, and now I've got the Gersel Park Neighborhood Association fully engaged, and we're ready for Porch Fest 2020, September 20th, noon to 5:00 in the neighborhood, please come.
And in addition to their words, this is what makes San Rafael special, is having these grassroots events that we do in partnership with the community and brings the community out. It makes us unique, there's no one else in Marin doing this type of event, and we're thrilled, so thank you all for the work that you've done and for keeping it going.
You know, I don't know, we just got the award.
The competition, the competition was fierce, we know that, the competition was fierce, so we can assume that, and they have great t-shirts, so we're going to do a quick photo, and thank you all.
Yeah, we have a little. All right, and is everyone, close as everyone can? Okay. Here we go. One, two, three. Hold it one more second. One, two, three, one, two, three. One more, one.
Thank you. Really, thank you so much. Wow. Congratulations.
Yes, thank you Mayor Protem. I have three brief announcements tonight, I think they are all good news. The first one is that there's been a lot of time from city staff and elected officials in the community working on the canal dredging issue, and trying to get federal funds to dredge the canal, it's been an extremely important effort that's been going on for a number of years, and we got information, I think it was last week, that it was, it's included in the Army Corps of Engineers budget at 1.3 million for all of the environmental engineering design work, all of those sorts of things, so it's great, it's not the full dredging of the canal, I don't want people to think that that means that this project now is fully funded and will happen, but it's an extremely important first step, because by getting in the Army Corps' budget for this work means that it's much more likely to be able to get in their budget to actually do the construction and do the dredging down the road. So, we're really happy about that, and just want to thank everyone who's been involved on this project, there's been too many to name at this point, but when we bring it forward to actually do the project, we'll make sure we do that. Also, I just wanted to point out, kind of our partner agency of San Rafael City Schools is going through a whole strategic planning process, and they're looking at district values, core skills, goals, and actions on a new three-year strategic plan. They're calling it Together 2023, so I'm not sure if they got that from Together San Rafael, but we're good at sharing, so they can use that word, but they have meetings coming up on February 25th at two different locations, and February 27th at two different locations, Vinicius Valley, Davidson, Bay of Vista, and Terre-Linda High, so there's lots of different opportunities, so people can go on our website or the school's website, and it'll be right there in the news if you want to participate in that. And then lastly, I just wanted to pile on, since it seemed like it was a night of awards, and slide this award for the camera, which is something that San Rafael just recently won, it's an overall champion award from the ICMA, which is the International City and County Management Association, and they have three different categories, and it's primarily related to like human resources and organizational culture kind of work, but their three categories are attracting and recruiting talent, developing and retaining talent, and improving workplace culture. And then if you score the highest possible on all three of those, you're recognized as an overall champion, which is what San Rafael was recognized as. So, I wanted to thank the Council for everything you do, particularly also human resources staff, and all city employees are involved in all of these different efforts, but we thought it was a big deal, and just wanted to brag about it a little bit tonight as well. Thanks. Oh, and who were we up against? Every other city in California.
Fierce.
And I'm very proud, thanks.
Wonderful, thank you. We'll move on to the consent calendar, are there any items that council member would like to poll?
Could we poll very briefly, item I, the Third Street at Heatherton Street improvements?
Okay, we will poll item I. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to address the Council on any of the items on the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion for the items not including I?
I move that we approve the consent calendar, other than item I.
Second? It's been moved and seconded, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy, aye. Councilmember McCullough, aye. Mayor Protem, Colin.
Aye, and that carries 3-0. So, item I, would you like a brief comment on, or do you have a question?
I just have a question.
Yeah.
And I apologize, Bill, if I had read the packet earlier, I might have called you earlier about this to save us the time, but this obviously is a, you're asking us to approve the award of a construction contract for the improvements at Third and Heatherton, which is an intersection we as a city council, staff, and as a community have spent a lot of time looking at and worrying over all the details, and the staff report does a nice job of explaining what those improvements will look like and the outreach that's been done. My question is kind of the other end of it, which is that in looking at the contract, it indicates that the work will be done by July within 60 days of the issuance of a notice to proceed. So, my question is, will we time the notice to proceed so that we, the work is done during the period, I'm guessing it would be summer and summer vacations, when there's going to be the least impact, given the difficulty we already have with traffic in that intersection and in the surrounding intersections? And are there any other considerations, like, well, no, but like the off-ramp on 101 North that drops down onto Second Street, if that's going to be resurrected this summer, is there a timing issue with that? Any other concerns that we should be aware of when we issue the notice to proceed?
Thank you, Councilmember Bill Guerin with Public Works, and Hunter jumped up and joined me as well, because he's the new Assistant Public Works Director and City Engineer, so he knows more about the project than I do, but yes, we have ordered the light poles that need to be put in place there, there is a long lead item associated with those, so we're, we have that going forward. We also are going to time the project so that when we have those in place, we'll be able to do a lot of the construction work that's associated with the intersection itself. The improvements are going to remove the crosswalk on the south side of the intersection, we're going to put up new lights, and do some other improvements there as well to improve safety. There was concern at one time about eliminating the two, or one of the two left-turn lanes, and we're not doing that anymore, we're adding a crosswalk on the east side so that people can go kind of three-legged over to the transit center in order to avoid taking that left turn from the second lane, which has been problematic in the past. So, I wanted Hunter to just address the specific question that you had, and then I'll talk about the traffic issues.
Okay, and just to be more specific, the construction, the 60 days potentially of construction that will take place, I'm assuming there will be some, perhaps modest, impact on traffic flow during that time, so I just want to make sure that we thought about that, given how busy this intersection is, and that we're going to time the work in the most optimal way.
Yeah, a lot of the work's happening on the, in the curbs, not in the street itself, so, but let me have Hunter address that.
Good evening, Council. In terms of the timing of it, we've required the contractor to do perhaps 95% of the work at night, between 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM, to address the traffic concerns. We don't want to repeat what kind of took place in 2016, we had a lot of construction at this very intersection, and that work was performed primarily during the daytime hours, and it did have significant impacts to traffic, so we've learned from that opportunity, and we are timing it, our new traffic poles, which have about a six-month lead time, they arrive in May, and so we're kind of timing this so that we can wrap up the majority of our construction, and then the signal poles will be installed, and project will be completed at that point.
Terrific.
So, to address your other question about other impacts, we're going to present later the East San Rafael Sidewalk Project, that is going to be in construction this spring and summer, it's about a year-long project. The Caltrans off-ramp, they actually had some, again, bidding issues, they didn't get any bidders on this latest go-around, so they're intending to put it out again, with the potential for the project to go two seasons, what they've talked about doing is all the construction work that doesn't actually affect the freeway exit itself, so they'll put piles in the water, they'll create the lane on the, what is now the planted area where the city flag is and those kinds of things, so they'll create all the infrastructure on both sides of the road itself this year, and then next year, the project will be, this is their plan going forward, they still have to get a bidder to go forward with that, but then they'll actually do the construction work of the off-ramp itself next year.
Wonderful.
Councilmember Bushy, do you have any questions?
Thank you.
I just have one, will we be able to put up electronic signage, so folks know when the construction is going to be taking place, because to Councilmember McCullough's point, it did cause some heartburn before.
We will have signs up, yeah, well before the traffic, the intersection gets under construction.
Wonderful.
Wonderful. Thank you, thanks.
Sir?
Yeah, I would like to make a motion if there are no other comments or questions. Yeah, then I move we approve item I.
Move and seconded, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy, aye. Councilmember Colin, I mean, sorry, Councilmember McCullough, aye. Mayor Protem, Colin.
Aye, that motion carries 3-0. Okay, so we are going to move along to the public hearing, the general plan 2040 and the downtown precise plan. Welcome.
Good evening, I'm going to start here, this is unofficially, progress report number four on the general plan 2040. I say unofficially because it's pretty much focused on the land use map, which is a key part of our land use element, which is an important element in our general plan, because every city, town, and county in California must adopt a land use map identifying land use types, intensity, and distribution. What we have before you tonight is a work that involves staff and the steering committee, and we also received input from the planning commission, and while some changes may seem minor, there are some new recommendations for the land use map, and before I go too far, I'm going to turn it over to Barry Miller, he's got a more elaborate summary of what we are proposing.
Wonderful, thank you.
Thank you, Paul, and I'll try not to be too elaborate, so we have a presentation for you this evening on the new land use map, and what we'll be doing is highlighting the changes to the map that are proposed. Before we get into the map, just wanted to give you a quick update on the progress on the elements at this point. As you see a red check up here, that means it's a topic that we have drafted policies for, and covered with our steering committee. We have at this point covered 12 of the 16 topic areas that you see on your screen, we'll be talking about culture and arts at the next steering committee meeting, we also have justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion policies, the downtown precise plan policies, and the neighborhoods element still to come. We anticipate wrapping this up by May. Paul mentioned the general plan map is a required part of every general plan, every city and county in the state is required to produce a map like this, and it does show the types of land uses and the densities, the government code for the state of California is quite specific in what you need to include on your land use map, it is the basis for the zoning map, so it is not the same as the zoning map, but it is kind of the framework from which the zoning map flows. So, this is the proposed 2040 general plan land use map, it uses 19 categories to display the different types of uses in the city, this is actually fewer categories than are on the current map, we actually made something shorter, and there are 28 categories on the existing, in the existing map, I'll explain in a moment how we were able to consolidate those and produce a map that is more streamlined. There are three types of amendments that I'm going to be walking through this evening, there are changes to the definitions of the land use categories, there are a series of amendments that are initiated, being initiated by staff, and then there are several applicant-proposed amendments that I'll describe. With respect to the categories, we're switching from a gross density metric to a net density metric. Density is the measure of how many units of homes, units of housing you can have on an acre of land. Currently, the general plan uses gross density, which presumes that it's a large piece of land that has no internal streets, and so the gross density metric is used to calculate the total number of homes, including the streets and the easements and sites that may be set aside for schools and parks. It's appropriate in a community that's growing very quickly on green fields, that's expanding outward. At this point, at least in the Bay Area, most communities have switched from a gross density standard to a net density standard, and you can see in the diagram here on the bottom right, most of our development in San Rafael is infill, it's already served by streets, it's already got frontage, we're not subtracting out internal area for large easements or public facilities, so we are proposing to switch to a net density standard. What that does effectively is, it results in a slightly different numeric calculation, again, looking at the screen here, gross density, this is the same five-acre square of land, this is just in Terre-Linda, both of these five-acre squares have 22 units inside them, the gross density, which includes all of the streets, is 4.4 units per acre, the net density, which subtracts out the streets, which are roughly 20 to 25%, leaves you with a net density of 5.7 units per net acre. It may seem like a minor change, but what this does is it actually helps us because it aligns the density in the general plan with our existing zoning regulations. Zoning does not include streets, zoning is based on your parcel size, and what this allows us to do is have an exact alignment between our general plan categories and our zoning categories, which makes it much easier to administer and determine consistency when a project comes in. I mentioned earlier that we were streamlining the categories, I want to emphasize that this is not taking away the level of detail in land use regulation, it is however, making the general plan a little bit simpler to interpret. In downtown San Rafael, there are currently six different categories to classify land use, which is a carryover from the 1993 Downtown Vision Plan, we're calling those categories downtown mixed use on the general plan map, and there is a specific, actually a precise plan that will cover that 265-acre area and include the more detailed land use regulations that are now included on the general plan map. In the office designation, there are three separate categories on the current general plan that correspond to office, office, office residential, and office retail, again, those are being consolidated into office mixed use, but we are retaining the three different zoning categories, so there's nothing that says you have to have a one-to-one correspondence between your zoning and your general plan, the text in the general plan specifically says we will have these three distinct zoning designations within the office mixed use category that will be used to classify those areas. Similarly, in the light industrial category, the Lindaro mixed use and the light industrial office are being combined into a light industrial office general plan category, and again, the definition states that on Lindaro and Jordan, there's an allowance for live-work development, which is in the current general plan, rather than having a separate category and color on the map, and some of this is really more of a cartographic thing, it's just easier to read 19 colors than it is to read 28 on the map. The park and open space categories, we already have a single park and open space zoning district, and we're combining parks and open space into a single category on the general plan map. In the plan itself, there will be a map that shows the different kinds of parks and open space in the city, so we'll still be able to distinguish community parks and neighborhood parks and large passive open spaces. We are also adding a sea level rise adaptation overlay to our plan map, we believe we're the first city in California to do this, this is a line indicating the outer edge of an area that would be subject to inundation in a 100-year storm, and by of an area that would be subject to inundation in a one-hundred-year storm, and by the year 2050, based on the sea-level rise forecasts that are in Bay wave. If you are seaward of this line, you will be subject to certain policies in the general plan that talk about things like resilience and hazard reduction. So the first type of amendment that staff initiated, I'm wanting to point out, are what we call Scrivener's errors. It's kind of an old-fashioned mapping term. These are correction of minor mapping mistakes that were made when the general plan was converted from paper form to digital form. Here's an example. You see inside that circle, there's a park at the corner of Los Colinas and Freitas Parkway that was mistakenly assigned to a single-family residential lot. We're correcting that. If you watch the screen, you'll see the park moves to the correct location, and the folks who live at number forty on that street get their residential designation back. There are about a half dozen or so of these. We are also expanding the mapping of public uses. There's a category on the general plan map for public and quasi-public uses. It is meant to apply to schools and public buildings, but in fact, most of the, or all of the San Rafael City Schools and Miller Creek Schools are not designated currently with that public designation. They have, in most cases, a residential designation. So we are applying the mapping, the public designation, to our schools, which really acknowledges their role as neighborhood centers and their importance to the community. So you really see them pop on the map. We're also assigning the public designation to a number of other public buildings that were not identified at the time of the last general plan. We are fortunate to have, have had additional land acquired as park and open space since the 2004 plan was adopted. Many of these parcels are in the county, but they're still in our planning area. The area you see on the screen is Buck's Landing near China Camp, and the large green area that you see on the map at the bottom right is an area that was formerly designated Hillside Resource Residential. That has all been acquired by Marin County Parks, and we're showing it now as parks and open space. And there are a couple of other areas that have been acquired or improved as parks and open space since the last plan that will be so designated. There are a few staff-initiated amendment proposals, which I would characterize as housekeeping, where we're updating the plan to show what's actually been built on the sites. For example, thirty-three North, which is apartment development off north, north San Pedro Road by the Civic Center, was developed on an office parcel, a plan that, parcel that had an office designation on the general plan. That land use category allows high-density residential, but now that there is an actual high-density residential development there and not an office building, we're just cleaning up the plan to show the actual use. The picture at the bottom right is in Santa Venetia. That's a subdivision that had been designated high-density residential, but was actually developed at medium density. So there are a few of these, mostly reflecting development over the last fifteen years. There are a handful of amendments that I would, again, characterize as cleanup items. These are, I would say, along the seam between medium and low-density residential areas. If you look at that red circle, there's one parcel on Union Street that goes through to Ridge Avenue in the Montecito neighborhood, where the medium-density residential boundary follows the parcel line. What we're doing is making it consistent so that the Ridge Avenue frontage is all in one category, and the Union Street frontage is in the other category. The zoning already does this, so this is something where we're actually cleaning up the plan to match the zoning, in this case, to, to create compatible uses. There are two properties where we are adjusting the designation downward from low-density to hillside residential. One is in Terre Linda, one is in Sun Valley. This is off of Elda Drive in Terre Linda, and you can see the large parcel in the center, which is about five acres, has a low-density designation, which would allow roughly seven units per net acre. And in this case, it's a very steeply-sloped site that is, I think the average slope is forty percent, and the proposal is to change that to hillside residential. The zoning is actually already consistent with the hillside residential designation, so this is one of the two in that category. There are two parcels in the Civic Center Station area plan that were identified as being suitable for a different zoning, or, sorry, different general plan designation. Both of these are self-storage facilities that are right next to the Civic Center Smart Station. Those are proposed for a office mixed-use designation instead of the light industrial office designation. Again, you can see the Smart Station and the two properties there. Moving on to the applicant-initiated amendment proposals, the city issued a call for amendments in April 2019, reaching out to property owners who had expressed interest in plan amendments for their sites, and also putting out a broader call via the, the website. There was a ten-week window of time provided for folks to submit an application packet. We did receive four applications, and then two additional letters asking for text changes to the general plan, and I'm going to walk you through those four applications now. The first was for thirty-three oh-one Kerner. This is an office building at the corner of Bellum and Kerner. It is currently designated light industrial office, and the property owner requested a change to community commercial mixed use. The principal effect of changing this is, it would, the existing use is still permitted, but this would create the flexibility to include multifamily housing on the site at some point in the future. It also would create a continuous commercial corridor along Bellum. We also looked at the property across the street, which is a retail center and offices, and recommended including that in this amendment, so you can see both one-fifty Bellum and thirty-three oh-one Kerner, which are the two parcels circled here, would be changed to general commercial, or community commercial, rather, which would allow that general commercial zoning. The second application was from Caltrans, and they had a request relating to the use of property that they lease to third parties. They have a number of parcels adjacent to the freeway, but within their right-of-way, and in some cases, under the freeway in the elevated portions. They had asked that those parcels be designated with a general plan category so that they could lease those properties more easily. What we are recommending here, and what we also presented to Caltrans, who I believe concurred with our approach, is not to designate the Caltrans properties, but rather to include a policy in the general plan that says essentially you can, you lease those two uses that are compatible with the adjacent uses. We did look at eleven cities between San Francisco and Santa Rosa on the one-on-one corridor. Every one of those eleven cities has the Caltrans properties as undesignated land, given that it's state property where the city has limited jurisdiction. So our recommendation is to not change the designation for these small fragments. I think you can see the areas here. This is at the Anderson Underpass, both on the top, and you can see it on the aerial below. So our recommendation is to retain the undesignated designation there. The third application was for property on Cullen Park Road in the upper part of the Fair Hills neighborhood, where one home site has two different general plan designations. The property owner requested that the entire site be designated low-density residential. You can see that on the map. Staff concurs with that recommendation. It would give one, the one property, a single general plan designation. There would not be a zoning impact in this instance. And then the fourth application was from Jackson's Hardware at four-thirty-five Dubois, which is a two-point-six-six-acre site with the fifty-thousand-square-foot hardware store. They requested a designation change from industrial to general commercial. Again, this proposed designation would allow housing. There's no project that's proposed at this time. I think it was a desire to have the flexibility in the future to look at this as a housing opportunity site. This was a tough one. We saw merits in the application, but we also saw some liabilities. And one of the obvious merit is that it's a, it's a potential housing site, which is an opportunity. But the liability is, this is one of the few industrially-designated areas in the city. It's not light industrial. It's industrial, which allows the most impactful uses. We have a very limited supply of land with this designation. Introducing housing on this site could create compatibility issues with some of the active businesses on adjacent sites. And at this time, staff recommends retaining the industrial designation. Paul mentioned that we brought this to the planning commission last week. They spent a majority of their time discussing the Jackson's Hardware application. I think they've generally concurred with staff's recommendations on the land use categories and the, the other changes, but they did have a thoughtful discussion about the pros and cons of changing that site for housing, and I think were a little divided on whether it was a good idea or not. We didn't ask for a vote at that point. We just, I think, wanted to get a sense of the commission as we, as we are here tonight, to get a sense of the council on these applications. There was also public comment on that, at that meeting, on the changes to the parcels west of the Civic Center Station. Again, general concerns about additional density in the Marydale area, and the need for pedestrian and, and other improvements in that area. This is the final slide. It's, I think, our, our hope is that this evening we'll go over any clarifying questions here from the public, and then hear your comments on any of what's been presented, and hopefully incorporate your feedback as we assemble the draft plan. We do plan on coming back to you this summer with the draft plan for public hearings, and we'll be touching on this again at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, questions? Yeah, yeah, Councilmember McCullough.
Yeah. Thanks. A couple of things. There was a comment in passing in the staff report that there is a, a pocket within the downtown mixed-use area that's retained its zoning as residential. I think it's medium-density residential. Why was that? Why didn't it, why didn't it pick up the same designation as the remainder of the downtown and still permit the residential neighborhood that exists there?
That was the Latham Street area, which is an intact area of about fifty single-family and some, some multifamily homes. I think the feeling was, we, there are a large number of older homes in that area. It's a stable area. We weren't really looking to change the character or the uses in that area or the density, and felt it was most appropriate to keep that pocket as an intact residential neighborhood, rather than, you know, lumping it with the rest of the downtown precise plan area, which is more fluid.
Thank you. On the, the sea-level rise adaptation line or boundary that you put in, can you explain just a little more about its implications? In other words, its significance in this document going forward, given that it's somewhat novel? And then whether or not there might be potentially negative consequences for those who own property or reside within the areas that are encompassed by this new boundary?
First of all, I want to state that it's primarily being added for disclosure purposes, and so that people are aware that if they purchase land in this area, that it could, it could potentially be susceptible to sea-level rise. And so that's one reason. The second reason is that we see that this area might be a good tool for adaptation. For example, either some sort of a zoning tool, or maybe a financing tool for adaptation. So if an adaptation measure or improvement is made, we have a boundary in place that we could use, let's say, for an assessment district, or a geo-hazard district, or things of that nature. So that was really basically setting the table for that. But it's not, at this point, something that's regulatory.
So, I'm assuming then the, the line, and I, I see it's utility. Thanks for that explanation. I'm assuming, though, that the line doesn't comport, say, with the FEMA flood zone lines that currently exist, and as they may be modified over time. You drew your data from, I think you said, the Bay wave results. So to the extent that there may be a disparity between our line and the lines that the insurance industry may use from time to time, are there any implications that in your outreach or discussions by the general plan committee that, that might surface here if this exists on our general plan going forward?
No, but I, I can say this. Well, actually, the one-hundred-year flood line is pretty close to the 2050 prediction line with the one-hundred-year flooding. It just would mean that the flooding would happen more frequently, and that, you know, you would have that condition far more frequently than what we see today, according to the predictions. I think the committee was a little cautious on this topic, primarily because of the uncertainty of this. And what we have built into draft policies that you will see when the general plan is released, is a commitment that we would revisit these predictions every five years and adjust that line, because we don't know if the predictions will be realized or not realized. Some predictions are saying that by 2050, we may have worse conditions, others don't. So that's the commitment we had, was to proceed with caution, and to be open to the fact that that line may change every five years.
And then, last question. And I'm, well, I'll save any thoughts I have about Jackson's Hardware, because I'm assuming we'll come back to that as a council. Last question, there was also the reference in the staff report, and if it's a data point that we've discussed previously, I'm ashamed I'd forgotten it, or maybe I wasn't paying attention. But the comment was that within the downtown mixed-use precise plan area, we're reserving up to a maximum of potentially twenty-two-hundred residential units, or we anticipate, and that's what we're planning for. Has this maximum number, how, how certain is this maximum number? In other words, how much flexibility do we have if somehow, within the next twenty years, there's significantly more demand for high-density housing within that planning area?
Good point, and I'm going to defer to Barry on this, because there are three scenarios that are being looked at in terms of land use intensity for downtown, and also for the city in its entirety, because we are obligated to look at different variables for the SEQA document, for the, for the EIR, and Barry, maybe you can...
Sure. Yeah, it's, it's not meant to be an absolute limit. It is, we are using it as a benchmark for planning purposes. So the EIR is going to assume that is the build-out number. We may or may not reach that number. If we exceed that number, we would require additional environmental assessment, or redo, not redo, but amend the EIR to look at the higher build-out numbers. Based on experience, the more, the greater likelihood is that it would be a lower number, so we're also testing lower numbers. I will say, we are, we are modeling, at least from a transportation perspective, a higher number as well, so that we have that data. But the actual EIR that will be certified would include that twenty-two-hundred assumption.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bushy? I just have a couple of quick questions on the sea-level rise. The map in the packet did not have the line on it, and I saw that you had it on the staff report, but it was just a close-up. So I'm glad that you asked those questions. It seems like we'll be revisiting it and still having a conversation about it, but it wasn't entirely clear where that line was.
Yeah, I think we're also working on the graphics for that line, because we want to make sure that it's clear what's being communicated. When you see that line, what does it mean? And we, we were testing it with folks and saying, is it clear? And getting some head scratching that, no, maybe we need to show a crosshatching, or something that makes it a little clearer what, what area is actually included or excluded. So I would say we're still working on, on the way that will be displayed.
So are other communities also adding in those type of overlays? Because we're not the only one that is going to have this issue going forward.
Everyone's watching us right now, yeah. And, and that's really what's been going on. I do want to add one other thing, too, is that there will likely be a separate map, sea-level rise prediction map on its own in the safety element.
Right.
So we intentionally, though, put it on the land use map so that there's a correspondence with, with land use, so.
Okay, thank you. And then my second question, under the description of the public and quasi-public, you had listed schools, and then you had a private high school that was up there. So can you speak to that? Are there other private schools, or some of the Saint Isabelle's, Saint Rayphels? Are we, are those also public, quasi-public? How consistent are we being?
The reason that we identified Marin Academy is that about half of Marin Academy is shown as public, quasi-public, and the other half isn't, because there were a number of properties that were acquired and improved with school facilities, but the site was never re-designated as public, quasi-public. So for that particular campus, we thought, since there was already a precedent in that it was shown, we would make the whole campus one category. We did not go out and find every private school and change the designation through this process. We did that with public schools, however.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. With that, I will open the public hearing and come and address us on this issue.
Good evening again. Bill Kearney, Sustainable San Rafael. I wanted to applaud this planning process for including the sea-level rise designation. This is clearly simply the beginning of a much-needed conversation in our community. This is not something that's going away. It's not something that we should delay action on, but we need to, of course, I think we all recognize, it is going to... all recognize, it is going to take a very detailed and thorough community conversation as to how to handle these impacts of climate change as they worsen over the decades. So this is a 20-year look, and it's great to have that beginning. We look forward to seeing what that designation will mean in terms of the, what will be required of the development there. So having said that, I mean, one benefit, for instance, in looking at properties like the requested changes for Kerner Boulevard and DuBois, although housing is, of course, very tempting, knowing that those parcels are within this designation, gives another perspective on, in considering whether we should be upzoning them at this point to include residential use, much as it's needed. The other thing that we would like to point out is, you know, we've got the shoreline, we also have the ridge lines and the hills. So looking at two of the designations already on the map, the Hillside Resource Residential and the Hillside Residential, most of which in San Rafael itself is relatively small, but these are areas that, in the, in light of wildfire, another very, very significant impact of climate change that the city has been working on a lot, as well as the county, we wonder whether these designations should be, have larger acre zoning. Right now, they're two acre and a half acre in that range. So we'd hope that staff would consider less density in order to avoid that climate impact. And there may be other things that could be incorporated in those districts as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. My name is Brad Sears, and I'm interested in talking about the industrial zone. Now, 30 years ago, 40 years ago, when I moved here, there was quite a bit of industry in San Rafael, and as you know, all the welding shops have gone, the machine shops have gone. They've all moved to either Terre-Linda, that industrial area up there, or Richmond. So having a, having an industrial zone is kind of a misnomer, but it's in keeping with the theme of this precise plan in that this precise plan is not precise at all. It condenses six individual zones. The 2020 general plan neighborhood element describes the downtown as six distinct districts with different identities, levels of height, and density. The plan before you tonight attempts to foresee the needs of the community through stakeholders, which is long-hand for special interest groups, with very little input from the public, short of a design charrette, which included zoning as a main issue. The proposal tonight lumps six of these districts into one, meaning the West End Village gets the same zoning treatment that the downtown core and transit area around the freeway get. To imply this is a precise plan is intellectually dishonest. It doesn't take into account the separate geography of the west, of west of E Street and the cultural corridor and in the Five MRO Zone, which is Fifth Avenue. This plan eliminates specific zones that serve to preserve the distinct identities that make San Rafael why we moved here in the first place. To call this plan precise does a disservice to the language and our intelligence. Five districts into one is ludicrous and lazy. Last-mazed design charrette included discussions about housing and density as well as livable, walkable, human-scale development. I was under the impression their findings would not, were not served by this streamlined offering. I would like to see the council reject this report and demand a more nuanced and sensitive view of the future. Homogenizing the downtown zoning is anything but precise. Precise is what it isn't. The authors of the 2020 general plan were community members that lived in town, unlike stakeholders with special interests. Some of these stakeholders don't pay city taxes or live within the city limits.
If you could wrap it up, Mr. Sears.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Kathy Minovi from the Raphael Meadows neighborhood, and I want to comment on the land use map rezoning proposals for two sites on Marydale Avenue specifically, as it relates to the general plan process. I want to just kind of put out the statement that not all infill sites are created equal. And I think that in the case of Marydale Avenue, this is very much true. I want to ask that North San Rafael neighborhoods, or just say that I feel they deserve similar attention as the downtown planning with its precise plan treatment that takes into account walkability between areas when planning and rezoning for upgrades. So as you may know, sites with poor traffic flow and poor bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure should be looked at with a healthy dose of restraint when it comes to proposals for high-density housing for both safety and quality of life purposes. As some of you may know, Marydale Avenue is interrupted in its middle by smart tracts and a creek that is prone to flooding on occasion. And the two storage sites that are proposed for rezoning are at the ends, both at dead ends of both the north and south segments of Marydale. If rezoned as proposed, it would allow for high-density housing or mixed use that could be high-density housing at these dead ends with very poor traffic and pedestrian infrastructure, unless it is built in alongside those proposed developments. So as a safety consideration, I'd ask that we think about the south portion of Marydale. It is the only way in and out of the Raphael Meadows neighborhood. In the event of an emergency like a wildfire, if we're having problems with traffic flow, that's a real problem, as we saw in the North Bay fires that jumped a highway, even though that area was not considered at high risk. It is lined with multifamily apartment buildings as well, and development is already in the works, additional development. The south end of Marydale, well, let me just go to the north end because there's two ports and I've run out of time, and I apologize.
Okay.
If that's okay, if I take a little more time?
Just a few more sentences.
Okay, great. So the north end of Marydale, as you may know, is the site of a planned segment of the North San Rafael Promenade Project. And that will claim a pretty good portion of the existing roadway on North Marydale. And I believe that if we have a planned high-density housing at that end of that street, it will increase traffic dramatically in an area where we are trying to reduce safety and traffic impacts on this, what we hope to be a very walkable area, and increase our draws to get people out of cars and walking and biking to public transit sites.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Minovi. Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council on this issue? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for additional comments. And maybe we can start with, there was questions about the Hillside designation, and then there was also a question about the downtown precise plan and how the designation and zoning interact on that.
Sure. The Hillside residential question, there will be maps in the general plan that identify those areas, both in the safety element and in the conservation element. I think part of the question was, would we look at lowering the allowable densities on some of those properties? At this point, we haven't started to look at reducing Hillside Residential to Hillside Resource Residential, which is the next density down. We can have a look at that. There aren't a whole lot of Hillside Resource Residential properties left in the city at this point, but we will, we will look at that. Mr. Sears brought up a issue about the precise plan. I want to emphatically say, we're not asking you to look at the precise plan this evening. There is a separate plan that covers downtown San Rafael that is extremely detailed, that will address many of the issues that he brought up. We are working on that plan, and it will come to you both probably in a informational and part of a progress report, and also, once the general plan is out, there will be a separate plan. The reason that we streamlined the general plan map is because that very detailed map of what is permitted in the downtown is being retained in the precise plan, and that is part of the general plan, so it has the same legal weight as the general plan. So none of the detail is being lost, it's just in a, in a parallel document, a companion document.
Thank you for that clarification. I think we all recognize that our downtown does have different flavors, depending on where you are standing. I did have a follow-up question on the Hillside because the other part that Mr. Kearney brought up was the wild, the WUI, the Wildland Urban Interface. And if you could just speak to, are general plans now reacting to that, knowing that wildfire is a bigger issue? Is it changing? I'm just curious what that intersection is with the designation.
Yes, we actually are required to by state law. There was a bill passed a few years ago that required that we look at wildfire hazard levels in both the local and state responsibility areas, that we include maps in our general plan that cover those, identify those areas, and that we include policies and action programs that deal with that hazard. Because there already is a wildfire action plan in the city, we're cross-referencing that and including relevant parts of it in the general plan itself. So I think we're, we are definitely covering that, and we will have those maps in the general plan.
Wonderful. So other questions or comments?
No, no general ones, but I'm gathering that feedback's been requested on the, is it four or just one? Is it just Jackson's Hardware, or is it the other three as well?
I think we would like your feedback on any or all of the recommendations that were included. There were staff-initiated amendments and then the applicant-initiated amendments. I know that when we met with the planning commission, they focused on the Jackson's Amendment, which is...
Well, I'm, I think I'm in accord with the consensus on the other three issues. On the Jackson's, the proposed Jackson's Amendment, I, well, I have a question, if we're going to address it now. At the risk of oversimplifying it, what I'm assuming is happening here is that Jackson's is proposing a new zoning for its property in order to streamline its ability to seek potential housing development in the future on the site. And they wish to avoid coming in for a general plan amendment, should such a proposal come forth to put housing on the site. Can you talk about what it means to come in for a general plan amendment as opposed to, should they get their way and get a different zoning designation for their parcel, how involved that process would be to place housing on the site?
Certainly. There is certainly a huge benefit to basically tag along with the city-initiated amendments, costs and timing, SEQUA review, a number of other things. To do a standalone general plan amendment, there's some very prescribed procedures that include tribal consultation, SEQUA review, and notification to surrounding communities, plus rezoning component to that. And depending upon the level of environmental review, that could take upwards of a year on its own. So there is, there is a benefit to basically coattailing onto the city's effort, but to do a standalone amendment like what's occurring on Los Camos, which will be a standalone project, is, you know, runs on its own timeframe. So there's a big difference there.
So to your comment, if, if the consensus were to accede to their request and incorporate this rezone now, what are the implications for cities, city staff, and this planning process as we continue and we go through to an EIR and draft and then final general plan? In other words, incrementally, how much more work or effort is it, apart from the policy considerations here that you've identified in your staff report?
Well, I don't know if it's that much of an effort. To be honest with you, I think the greater concern here is setting a precedent, too, for adding a land use in an area that's historically been industrial and the potential for that type of requests being made by others in the area. And then all of a sudden, you're depleting your industrial area and you're introducing residential uses in that area where there's definitely a conflict. So there, you know, there's a fundamental question, but with regard to the timing and the implications, I will defer to Barry on that in terms of looking at this as part of the greater package.
Yeah, to Paul's point, it's not really an issue of effort on our part because we're in the process now of beginning the traffic modeling and looking at those impacts. There's no project that's proposed on the site, so we would not be providing SEQUA clearance for a specific development that, if anything happened in the future, they would still be required to do those studies. But as Paul said, I think the concern, and this was the steering committee as well, we brought this issue up with them, is that there are a very limited number of sites like this and that there could be some, like a domino effect essentially, and picking a single parcel and changing it to a use that allows housing, when it's surrounded by not light industrial but broader industrial uses, including the concrete batch plant, which is just a few blocks away, a block away, that that would just be a precedent that was not consistent with the existing general plan policies or the emerging policies, and that the opportunity to apply for an amendment in the future did exist for the applicant.
Have any of the other proximate property owners expressed the same interest and made the same request that their properties be upzoned so that they can take advantage of housing in the future?
Not at this time, no.
Councilmember Bushy?
I'm going to follow on on Councilmember McCullough's issue and raise one of my own. Following on, in the broader picture, thinking about the notion of one particular property asking us to do something different for their property than surrounding properties, absent some other external factor, like the site up on Cullenden that was, you know, double, double-designated, they had a particular reason for wanting a change. There's no particular reason here. If we were to start accepting these type of requests, people want, everyone will want an upzoning, and we'll just have a large number of those. So absent a compelling reason for treating a particular parcel different, it would be my hope that we would not accept those sorts of requests and not act on them. To me, that's the more compelling or the better rationale for not making this change, although I do happen to agree that we do need our industrial sites and we should retain those as well. So now shifting gears to the sea-level-rise issue. I heard, as the council member attending these meetings, I've heard a lot of discussions about this issue, but the one word that I heard from our community development director, Paul, only moments ago, gave me great pause. You used the word prediction map to describe what we're going to put in the safety element. And I'm very concerned that we would get into the business of prediction, particularly, as you say, everyone's watching us. Predicting climate change is a very difficult thing to do, and I'm not sure that that's something that we should, we should be initiating on our own. That said, it is a factor in our planning, and thinking that the word that better describes what we want to do with this overlay designation is more like acknowledge that there is a higher level of risk in these particular areas. Not that we're predicting that this is where it will happen, but there's risk here. So is that, is that consistent with what we've been hearing, would you say?
Yes, and actually, I like that. The word prediction is very open-ended, and it's just something that we've historically used on this topic. And you're right, if it's going to get embedded into the general plan as a map overlay, maybe there might be another term that's used, like, you know, sea-level-rise awareness map or something like that, yes. Again, because this, this all goes back to disclosure and awareness.
Exactly. Not prediction.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam?
Yes.
Just a follow-up question, back to the Jackson's Hardware. I tend to agree with Councilmember Bushy that, and the comments from staff, that these one-off requests should be, you know, disfavored unless there's a, either compelling reason or it's a request that's sort of consistent with the vagaries of the particular site. But, so my question is, how does the Jackson's request compare with the request on Bellman and Kerner? is, how does the Jackson's request compare with the request on Bellum and Kerner? If we're going to give them the, or make the change that they've requested, how are they differently situated?
The Bellum and Kerner corridor is almost all commercial right now, and in some respects, this is the reverse, where they are the exception parcel that now has industrial zoning on a commercial corridor. And we felt that it was actually more consistent to have a commercial designation, given the use of the site and the use of the adjacent, and designation of the adjacent properties, which are all commercial. And we actually did designate, redesignate an adjacent property across the street that also had an industrial designation, so that that is a continuous commercial corridor. So it's not cherry-picking a single site, it's actually creating a more consistent map in that case.
Thank you. And I will add that I was privy to the discussions at the general plan steering committee both last week, and it came up before, I think last year, I think there was only one other time I substituted for you. And being someone who recognizes the housing situation and how we really are always looking for opportunity sites for housing, my natural inclination was, oh, well, of course, we would start to change that designation. But having participated in those general plan steering committee meetings, which is comprised of people all across sectors, I really have become more educated and knowledgeable about the importance of our industrial use, usage designations in San Rafael, and that if we were only housing, we would be losing a lot. Let's say if everything became housing and we didn't have the industrial use, that we really need those, both from a growth and economic standpoint, a sales tax generator. So, I would be inclined to, or am inclined to support the staff's recommendation that it maintains its current industrial designation.
I agree.
Yeah, it was, it was fascinating being part of those conversations. And the general plan steering committee really wrestled with it, and there was a lot of conversation about that. Okay, so you have plenty of input. Is there a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Collin.
Aye. That passes three zero. Okay, moving on to our next agenda item. And thank you, Barry and Paul, very much. We are moving on to the Francisco Boulevard East sidewalk improvements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Bill Guerin with Public Works. We're here to give you an update on the East Francisco Boulevard sidewalk widening project. As you know, this has been a long time coming. We've had funding for some time. We've been in design for a while. We've done right-of-way acquisitions, and we're finally ready to move forward. And Hunter is going to walk us through that presentation.
As Bill had mentioned, this is a longstanding project. It's a multi-phase project, in fact. And before us here is a map that consists really of three different, separate, unique projects. On the far right is Phase One. It's kind of a purple line. This was a sidewalk widening project that was initiated and constructed back in approximately 2010. Caltrans was the lead agency at the time. They did that, constructed that work in conjunction with some freeway work at the interchange of Bellum and Francisco. Since that time, the city has procured various grants to forward the design to, and then move forward into construction. On your left is a, kind of an orange-colored line, that's Phase Two. That is the pedestrian bicycle bridge that we collectively worked on last year and had a great grand opening. And then we have this gap right in the middle, which is the green line, which is Phase Three. And this is a sidewalk, it's an infill project linking Phase One and Phase Two. So, we're extremely excited to be moving forward with this. It is many years in the process to get to this point, but we are excited to begin construction later this summer, or late spring, early summer. In terms of a concept, sometimes it's difficult to gauge what we're dealing with. This is a before-and-after photo located on Grand Avenue in front of the Toyota dealership. This work was performed in 2019, but it gives you an idea of kind of how complex it is. Often, from an engineering standpoint, we may say it's, quote, "just a sidewalk project," but it's really not. This benefits so many people in the community. In this particular case, you'll notice in the before photo, we have some landscaping. Along the entire frontage of Francisco Boulevard East, as well as Grand Avenue, property owners over the years have encroached into the public right-of-way. And so, one of the challenges with this particular job is informing each of those property owners about those, those improvements that they have built, and many of them unknowing. They've been there for decades. So to come in and explain where the public right-of-way is, and explain what the impacts are, has been critical. But we've done a very good job of that. We've done a lot of door-to-door contacting and letting people understand and ask questions, so that there aren't any surprises if we start breaking ground, and they think, hey, that was, that was my planter box. Well, those are going to be, in some cases, removed or modified, so that we can take, or kind of reoccupy the public right-of-way. And this is a perfect example in front of Toyota. We worked with their, their team and making sure they understood what was happening, and we are going to replicate then this same concept all the way down Francisco Boulevard East. Now, this is one, one potential approach. We have given this a lot of thought. How might a contractor go about executing this construction project? The frontage road of Francisco East is not extremely wide. It's utilized by a lot of heavy traffic, buses, vehicles that are going to and from schools in downtown, and it's going to be disruptive, and we understand that. And traffic impacts are going to be something that we, we need to get out ahead of on this one. And so, our approach at this point in time is to subdivide the project into smaller phases. Typically, a contractor might approach it by saying, I'm going to remove a sidewalk from start to finish, the entire area, because that's most cost-beneficial to them in terms of just getting the work done. But we don't think that that's what's in the best interest of our residents from a traffic safety standpoint or for the pedestrians. And so, we are going to divide the work up. And what we're showing here is a hybrid approach. In blue, on the left side of the screen, is a segment from Grand Avenue all the way down and to Harbor Street. We're proposing that that be performed at night, predominantly because there is not an alternate route where vehicles, you know, can detour on. By doing that at night, we minimize the traffic impacts. We understand that there will be some noise impacts that may carry across the neighborhoods. But this is going to be of most benefit long-term. It also helps in terms of construction. The contractor is able to get in, get the work done quickly, and, and move forward. Now, on the right side of the screen, you'll see a red line. This is on Francisco East from Vivian down to Harbor. We're proposing that this be done during the daytime. And that is because there is an alternate detour route, which is Front Street, and that is highlighted in orange. This hybrid approach does a couple of things. It allows the contractor to move forward, have a safe working zone. We do want to maintain space for pedestrians that can use Francisco East even during construction. So, the detour is a vehicular detour, but not for pedestrians. They will have their own dedicated space through the construction zone. We know that the contractor will have heavy and large equipment, so we need to be mindful that they need their own space to occupy and to work safely, and this is kind of a best approach. In fact, we were able to work with a local contractor that has done a lot of business with the city over the years and kind of picked their brain on site. How might they go about this? The reason we've created these parameters now, as opposed to during construction, is to make sure we get the cost, because this will impact how the contractor goes about his business. It will have impacts in terms of the night work, where they have to pay to open a concrete plant at night, as opposed to just during daytime hours where there isn't a surcharge. So there's a lot of factors that come into play in how they bid their job. With these parameters, we think we're gonna get a good price. We also think they understand going into the project what's expected of them. As mentioned, transportation, there will be some traffic impacts. We will have a one-way southbound throughout the project corridor. We've met with a working group that included fire and police and others, and everybody is on board that is part of that working group, understanding that access into the canal neighborhood is extremely important to them. The northbound detour will be a bit of a challenge for some folks. There is going to be some parking removal related to that. In fact, we recently met with members or bus operators of Golden Gate Transit, and we test drove a vehicle, a bus, down the street to see what might those impacts be. How can a bus negotiate some of the terms, and how much parking might we need to remove to accommodate both the buses, but minimizing impacts to the local businesses. And then, as I mentioned before, environmental, that's predominantly because of the noise and not really anything else. It will be kind of annoying at times for folks who, who may be sleeping, and that noise, maybe it carries across the canal. But we think that the, the current approach is a good effort to kind of minimize, you know, mitigate the impacts associated with construction. Our next steps, the project is currently out to bid. Bids are due back on March 24th here in the council chambers. We anticipate returning before the council in April to recommend an award of contract. We will also be recommending an award of contract for a field inspector. We have about $6 million in federal funds, and this is a very large project that will require onsite field inspection by consultant. And we anticipate kind of a June roughly breaking ground and getting going on this project. We've estimated roughly 12 months. We think we can do it in less, but that's going to be up to the means and the methods of the contractor to determine how they can go about it. So, that's kind of what we're anticipating. I'm hopeful it's not that, but we're gonna see how this goes. Sometimes the night work makes its own challenges in terms of visibility and seeing underground utilities. So we need to make sure that we've got sufficient lighting for pedestrian safety at night, as well as, you know, in the winter months when, when people are up and down the corridor. But that's where we're at. So, with that, we'll turn to any questions.
Thank you, Hunter. Do we have any council questions?
Good. Yeah. Hunter, thanks for that, and thanks for the staff report. The, I'm, when the work is done, well presently, for most of the length of this particular segment of East Francisco, there's two lanes of travel and then a center turn lane with limited parking. What will the lane configuration be when the project's completed?
The ultimate lane configuration will remain much the same as it is today. We're not looking to reduce the roadway width. There's a couple of small segments in which we will be going out into the existing roadway by maybe a foot or two, but there, and there will be some parking changes as well. Specifically down near the intersection of Vivian Way and Francisco Boulevard, there is a private parcel there that has a number of on, or onsite parking stalls. Our project will effectively eliminate some of that, but we are in lieu creating on-street parking in front. So the part, the property owner is aware of the different changes, and we think, I don't recall if it's a net increase, but we're pretty close to kind of calling it a whitewash in terms of parking removal or impacts in the ultimate sense. In terms of what you mentioned down in front of, let's say Toyota, or the car dealerships where they frequently are offloading trucks, we're not proposing any changes there. We're working, the widened sidewalk were predominantly widened towards the private property site and not out into the street.
So there'll still be two through lanes and a center turn lane for much of this area?
Yes.
And I presume finally, the roadway will be resurfaced?
That is part of the plan. We're currently working on that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, so when is the resurfacing anticipated to occur?
We have an approach, we have an approach right now where we are working with our designers to provide us a plan for that. We'd like to advertise and perform that work perhaps concurrently to some extent with this construction. We don't know exactly how that's going to phase, phase in, because we have two different contracts going, and how those need to kind of interplay with each other. But worst-case scenario is as soon as the first contractor is done with the sidewalk, we can immediately roll right into resurfacing. And the idea is that this, the resurfacing is a city-funded project. We could bring that to council for an award prior to completion of the sidewalk, and kind of have that, essentially a shovel-ready project, and then figure out what the timing needs to be. There is some liability with having two contractors in the same place, and we need to make sure we kind of puzzle through some of those items of any concern. But we want to move forward with resurfacing as fast as reasonably possible.
But this year?
Just to be clear, the, the project does not include resurfacing. It's purely sidewalk work, and the resurfacing would be part of our normal resurfacing project budget.
Right, but they're scheduled to occur probably sequentially, possibly simultaneously, but in any event, this year.
I would not expect the resurfacing portion to be this year, depending on how this pans out.
Yeah, this is a year-long project starting in June, and so it would be sometime towards the end of that project that the resurfacing happens, so sometime next year.
So, next year. Okay, just so we manage expectations.
The other, the other element that plays into that, because of how busy the street is, the resurfacing would need to be performed at night, not only because of traffic concerns, but just simply because of making this actually happen. And we need the nighttime temperatures to be high enough where the asphalt will actually lay flat and work to our advantage. So if it's in the middle of winter, that becomes a bit more of a struggle. So, again, some of this is just the timing and making sure we get the best work product possible.
Okay, but it's on your calendar. Sounds good.
It is.
I had one follow-up question. You had mentioned Golden Gate Transit, and I can actually see in there a Marin Transit bus, I guess, bus stop. So, have you also reached out to Marin Transit? It's great. I'm really glad that we're thinking ahead and dealing that, understanding that transit's really important there, but...
The short answer is yes.
Okay.
And they both have been parties to this, and my apologies, we, I tend to co-mingle the two because they're interactive, you know, interplay quite a bit.
They're different, so...
But they are different, yes.
Yes. So, thank you. Okay. So, no other questions? I'll open the public hearing on this item. Anyone would like to speak to it? Mr. Carney?
Good evening once again. Bill Carney, Sustainable San Rafael. I just wanted to note the importance, significance of this project. It's been a long time coming, and it will serve a very significant role in terms of connection between downtown and the canal for safe bike and pedestrian access. So, you know, this is really great to see happening. I want to compliment DPW on finding the remainder of the money, which would sound like a real accomplishment. So, it's great to see that, which is federal money, I believe, which is great. So, this gave me an opportunity to kind of drill down to the first time into these drawings, and I was looking for trees, of course, and they're there, which was wonderful. And not only are they there, but they're in three-by-five-foot tree wells, and the species chosen are for that size of planting area, pretty good size, which I really compliment the team on. And would note that the project that I was mentioning before of 100 trees coming is specifically being funded for really big trees in appropriate sites, so they can sequester as much carbon as possible. And we're seeing that in this project as well. They're as big as appropriate for this particular site, and that will serve that purpose of sequestering carbon, which needs to inform all of our street landscaping. And it's great to see the compatibility of all the multiple uses, all the multiple utilities, et cetera, being compatible with the use of biking and traffic and, and walking, as well as a role for nature. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public would like to address us on this issue? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for additional, additional comments, or...
I would love to make a comment, and then if I'm allowed, a motion. I want to just echo what Bill Carney said and amplify a little bit. I think this is a, we've been talking about this project for a long time. It's a very important connector between important areas within our community, but particularly from the canal to the transit center and to the retail shopping at Montecito Center. And I drive the area every day. I know Bill Guerin does as well. It's very challenging to navigate at times, particularly during rush hour. The condition of the roadway isn't great, but really, it's for pedestrians and cyclists that it's a very difficult process. And to finish this finally will be a real win for the community, so I'm very excited about it, and I appreciate all the hard work that's gone into the planning and the securing the funds. And now we've got a project that really is win-win-win throughout the community and, and for our environment as well. So, I, can I make a motion, or?
Yes.
No, I want to preempt any other comments.
No, no, that's, it's a report.
Yes, so I move that we accept the report with gratitude.
And with gratitude, I second it.
It's been moved and seconded with much gratitude.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Collin.
Aye. That motion carries three zero. Thank you, Bill and Hunter, for that. Do we have any council member reports?
Actually, I have one.
Okay, Councilmember McCullough.
Well, yeah, for several months now, I've, I've been keeping my mouth shut on the, on the future of the MTA, because the, I'm talking about the Marin Telecommunications Authority, on whose board I sit and I have since 2011, because since the, well, dating back to the grand jury report last year, when it was proposed, among other things, that the MTA should dissolve itself and should move some of its functions into the hands of others, the MTA's been grappling with exactly that. And so, even though the MTA and participating jurisdictions approved its, responded to the grand jury and effectively approved its ongoing status, the MTA has been at a... grand jury and effectively approved its ongoing status, the MTA has been at a crossroads for some time. And when it reached out before the grand jury issued its report, when it reached out to the MGSA, Marin General Services Administration, the MGSA didn't have the capacity at the time to take over the MTA's ministerial functions, but now it does. And so, that coincides with the planned retirement of Gene Bonander, the half-time executive director of the MTA. So, last week, the MTA board voted to further negotiations with MGSA to take over MTA's ministerial functions, which is receipt of franchise fees from our cable television operators and remit those franchise fees to the participating jurisdictions, which are all the towns and cities except for Loraxburg and Novato, plus the county, to move that function over to the MGSA and then dissolve. And so, the process within which to do that, assuming that the boards of the various organizations are in agreement, would be by the end of this fiscal year, by June 30th or July 1st. So, that is likely to be the future of the MTA. And it's for a lot of reasons, but fundamentally, it's, as we've seen, disruption in other parts of our economy. We're seeing it here too, because as people cut the cord, franchise fees are reducing, and the overhead associated with maintaining a separate JPA for this function is becoming burdensome. So, we had an opportunity with the planned retirement of our executive director and with additional capacity at MGSA to move this over and do something that's efficient, makes sense for the jurisdictions, and interestingly, is somewhat coincident with the grand jury's findings last year. So, that's where we are.
Wonderful. Excellent report, Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bushy? No? Okay, we have nothing on the San Rafael successor agency, so this meeting's adjourned.